Thank you. Meeting, come to order, please. As Chairman of the Select Board due to the coronavirus, yes, COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and the court's governance and news emergency order number 12 pursuit to executive order 2020-04, this board is meeting electronically utilizing the Zoom platform. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom and instructions are provided in the Town of Lee's website at leeneehampshire.org. If anybody has a problem with access, please call 603-659-5414. And please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by a roll call vote. So let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance when each member states their presence. She also please state whether there's anybody else in our room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Mr. Bugby?
I'm here and alone.
Mr. Brown?
I'm here, I'm alone.
And Mr. Lacrosse, I'm here and alone as well. Thank you all for coming. First order of business is going to be a public hearing with respect to the Lee Raceway. Who is speaking?
Joe Bassett.
You have the floor, sir.
Okay, just as we do every year, I presented my schedule for our 2021 season. We use our normal 23 dates for racing. We've only got two test and tune dates this year. When we get to Oktoberfest, when we use Friday, it's typically just for test and tune, we're going to use a race date and do practice and racing in the same day. So I didn't, I used a race date for that. The only real difference on our schedule this year compared to in the past is the car show that we normally have with the New Hampshire Muscle Car Group would like to move that to Saturday and be a separate event. They would like to do a car rodeo on the track. It's not, it's not using the track per se as around the oval. It's about using the track for probably a cone course and the burnout contest would normally do, which only lasts about a half an hour. That's, that's pretty much our schedule there in a nutshell. And then this year, we had an issue back in 2017, we had come to the board to get driver education and safety testing approved for Tuesdays and Thursdays. That's what that verbiage is, and it's basically exactly the same thing that was approved in 2017. I didn't realize that this was something we'd have to come back to for, for every year because we used, we used it a few times this year and we did have a complaint and where it's not physically on the ordinance, we stopped doing it obviously. So once we realized that that was the case and that's what I have for, for 2021. I guess at this point, it's questions from you and what you're thinking.
I have one question first, then I'll move to the other select board members. I noticed, you know, our section two says eight hours beginning to end with respect to, you know, car racing and 16 of the 20 or 10 hour races.
That's, that's actually just on the rain date list and that's only because of Oktoberfest. Those are potential rain dates for Oktoberfest, not knowing when we can be with as heavy as the fall schedule is, we're not sure which weekend it would fall into. The last probably half a dozen years or so, we've asked for the 10, 10 hour extension for especially Oktoberfest and May Madness and ISMA, we asked for it just to give us a buffer. So if we have any inclement weather, we don't have to shut down and go to a rain date.
Okay, Mr. Bugby and Mr. Brown, do you have questions?
Joe, you got a TBD. What is that? Are you waiting for like a race to be announced or what is that?
There's, there's a possibility of a race to be announced for that date. And if not, it leaves me, if I have a bad, this year, we had the perfect year. We had no rain outs as far as our races go. That leaves me the opportunity to, if I don't get that other race scheduled, I could move my, my championship night back to that night and still get a full season for like NASCAR points and what I need to do for my obligations with NASCAR.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
I'm good.
Okay, at this point, the, oh, before I go on, just looking at this sharepoint that's in front of me at this point, you know, when you're test and tune and the rain dates, your numbering is off there. 14, 15, 16, 17, 14, 15, 16. You see it?
No.
Julie?
On the right hand corner, rain dates.
Yeah.
It's just missed typos, I assume.
13, 14, 15, 16, 17. Wow, 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 wow. Yep.
Oh, I see, yep.
So that's why I said, you know, 20, you know, with respect to rain dates, I'm going, well, we kind of misnumbered. It looks like 16, but it's, it's really 20.
And in all honesty, unless we get our back up against the wall, we don't like to use the rain dates because they don't work for our end as far as either people already have plans to go to a different race or another, another event. So rain dates for us are the last resort. Oktoberfest is a little bit different where, you know, you gotta kind of try to get that in before the season's out. But our, our goal is to not use these rain dates.
Okay, thank you. Could I ask people to mute unless you want to speak? You'll be recognized one by one by the town administrator. Otherwise, I hear all serious noises through the microphone system. I guess the floor is open at this time. Who would like, is there anybody who would like to speak on this issue? You see anybody, Julie?
No.
Anybody in chat?
I do not see any hands raised.
One more call. Anybody want to speak to this issue at this Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing.
John, can I make one comment?
Please.
Can we just change the license? I know that I've not been promoted to chair. So can we tweak that and make you the chair on the forum?
Oh, man. We will, we will fix those and then send it out for signature.
All right. I think that's called a Freudian slip, isn't it, Julie?
I don't know what it is.
It's probably that bribe that I gave you the other day to promote me.
Still scrambling over here.
If you could change it, that would be great.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, therefore I move to accept the Lee USA Speedway's 2021 proposed operation schedule and grant them a license subject to the conditions imposed by the Lee Racetrack Ordinance, including inspections by the building inspector, fire chief, police chief, and submission of certificate of insurance to the town administrator. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion?
No.
Roll call, please.
No.
No. Okay. Oh, I got you. No to the discussion. Thank you very much. Roll call vote, Mr. Bugby.
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Lacrosse, yes. Motion carries. Congratulations, Joe.
Can I just ask one question? Is this covering the driver education and safety testing too?
I assume it did. Nobody spoke against it. Is that your two feelings, Mr. Bugby?
Yep, I'm fine with it.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, I'm fine.
Okay, you got it.
Okay, I thank you very much and I look forward to working with the Town of Lee for 2021.
Thank you. Let's hope it's a successful season.
Thank you.
Next item is the second budget public hearing associated with our particular budget at this time. And there's three areas of it. One is to review the proposed fiscal year 22 budget. And I see that Julie has put that up in front of us. Let me just, just try to get my paperwork together here. I think the other two select persons, we probably should go through this again, section by section. Are you in agreement?
Sure.
Mr. Brown, you okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. I'll just read it off. If there's no, just stop me if there's a particular issue that you want to discuss. The part of selection area. Elections and registration. Tax collector. Legal expenses.
I don't like them. Can I make that comment?
You can make all the comments you want.
Go ahead.
Go ahead at this point. Planning and zoning. Government buildings.
Can I ask a question about the daily building?
Please.
Did we figure out how much is going to be covered by the unassigned fund balance and how much we really need to budget for this budget year? It is 15? Is it 10 months?
I believe that the numbers in here are correct. It's, well, we're down to six months in fiscal 21. So six months of the rent is covered by the unassigned fund balance plus the other expenses.
So it's not 12 by the unassigned? I thought we put in 60,000 for that.
It, it is, but only half of that goes into fiscal 22. We're still in fiscal 21.
Correct.
And we're in the building. So six months of the unassigned fund balance is being used in fiscal 21.
Right.
That leaves six months of the unassigned fund balance for fiscal 22.
Yep.
So that's.
5,000 is 30, not 50.
Yeah, but there's other expenses.
Okay. So, oh, okay. So that, there's other things in there besides just the rent?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Yep.
Any other questions on daily building?
No.
Nothing. Police department. Personally, I'm having trouble trading at halftime into a full-time position. So I want to put that on the floor at this time.
Okay.
Because I'm looking at this budget running at 6% and most of the issues associated with budgetary issues is personnel.
Okay.
Dispatch, we can't do much about. Fire?
Ambulance, John.
Did I miss? Excuse me. Ambulance. Thank you. Nothing. Fire. I have the same issue with respect to personnel. I'm not wanting to put forth a full fire position. Code enforcement. Watershed Alliance. This is zero anyways, right? Animal control. Sorry about that.
Oh, is that you, John?
Yeah, that was me. I'm an important guy sometimes. You never know what it is.
You should have an assistant, John.
I should have an assistant. Health. General Administration?
General Assistance?
Yeah, General Assistance, excuse me. Parks and Recreation?
I would like to reduce the, the Oyster Youth Association back to the 15,000.
Yep. And can I just say, I believe there are a couple of people that will want to speak to the library.
Can I ask a question first?
No.
Yes.
And I know this from the last meeting that Ruth is going to put together something. Can somebody explain to me what the, what is in this column in terms of the personnel changes? Because I know Ruth said that she was sending you some updated information. Can somebody explain that to me, please?
Is this the updated one as I'm looking at?
Yeah, but the, the only thing that I updated was because the ABC said that they intended to give the library 250,000. I added in the difference between the 250 and the 237 and I put it into the last line in the budget, the library trustee line.
I see. Could maybe somebody from the library explain to me what they're proposing now or what the changes were that Ruth was talking about?
Is, is Annie here? Otherwise, I will speak.
Annie was here. Oh, she's muted.
You can go ahead, Ruth. Please explain that we, in coming up on Wednesday also, where our final recommendations will come from.
Right. So if the board recommends the 250,000, that would not include amounts for the children's, the youth services position to be full time. This, the numbers you see here that ancillary PR expenses of 70,000, that's anticipating children's librarian at full time with benefits. And it also is anticipating six months of the new library director, the benefits for that position. That's a number that we don't really know what it's going to be, but the placeholder is for the new director to take all of the medical benefits and retirement and such. Right now, I do not carry the medical benefits. So there's a considerable savings in that respect, but we have to budget for the six months. So if, if the board's recommending a $250,000 even, we just want the opportunity to rearrange the line items so that it, so that it's not cutting out our library trustees amount, which is our operating expenses. What we'd really like to ask for is 46,800 on that. Let me pull up my spreadsheet.
I just want to say that the library trustees have looked at a lot of various things to try to make the library better for the Town of Lee. And we've looked through the personnel and the staff hours and things like that. Our youth services librarian has increased in hours up to the point where she can. And if we add any more time to that position, which is well warranted at this time, we would need to include benefits, which you all know are include health, dental and disability. So those things we're still looking at and the trustees meet on Wednesday and we'll make our final recommendations, but we hope that that 250,000 will be a number that we can work with and we can rearrange things if we need to.
Right. I do, I do have some updated numbers, Julie, if you want to make any changes because to show what, how we would allocate the 250,000.
Yeah, if you could send those to me before the board meets again to finalize the budget. Yes.
Okay, I can send them. Well, I can send them right now if you like.
I just wanted to say also that we may have a few people that, that are here tonight that might want to speak about our youth services li, librarians importance in our town.
This is a public hearing. The floor is open. Just Julie will recognize as one by one.
Sure. So just understand that you'll be able to speak, but there won't, we won't see you, but you will be able to speak. So the first one whose hand is raised is Nicole Montanez.
That's me and I had two four-year-olds. So if they scream, I'm sorry. They are, they are in love with our library. We do appreciate the space that was created down in the basement. If you're, if you haven't ventured down there, I highly suggest you going down there and all the hard work that the library team has done in there. I just really need to make sure that everybody there who, I mean, you guys all look at the age bracket that you might not have little kids at home right now. But what the youth services is doing right now is incredible, specifically in this time of Zoom and all of the extra effort they're doing of printing out materials for my preschoolers, checking up on us and letting us know like the good books for diversity, which is really important for my family because we are a mixed family. I just feel that she's probably, this position probably does a lot more work at home than they do in the hours at the library. And just like as a teacher, because I do have a teacher background, I feel like it is important to raise up the people that are doing well in our community and the people that are like making a difference, especially in our love, like our young kids' lives. I mean, I know money doesn't grow on trees and I understand budgeting. I am a Dave Ramsey girl. But I just feel like sometimes it's really important to make sure that we are treating the people that, I mean, they're not frontline workers like police and, and fire, fire people, but they do serve a really, I don't even know if I'm saying it right, but they do serve the community above and beyond what most places are doing right now. And I, I think that you guys should take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Sherry Griffiths?
Hi, Sherry Griffiths, Riverside Farm Drive. I would like to, to recommend to the board that we increase this position to full time and with benefits. We've lived in town for over 20 years and I do, I've never seen our children's library services be as, as amazing as they, they currently are. And as a whole, the, the library has been, especially in this, with, with the pandemic, the library has been the, the place that the children can really count on, especially during the summertime when the children aren't in school. And then of course, speaking from our own experience, being a home education family, it is a time that our, our family has, has utilized the library and then the children's services. So I do really encourage the board to please consider this position full time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually don't see any other hands raised.
Is there any comments about other aspects of the budget that was just previously presented?
Oh, wait a minute. Lisa Sparopoulos?
Hi, thanks. You said my name perfectly. Thank you, Julie. I just wanted to echo what Nicole and Sherry said. I think that it would be in the best interest of our town to make this position a full, a full-time position, not only because the position itself is important, but specifically Judy has done a tremendous job for our community. And even, I've been here three years, but Ms. Judy has done a great job before the pandemic of helping connect members of the community with one another. And I think that having her be full time would be a great asset to us.
Thank you.
Nicole, did you want to speak again?
Just had a quick question. We've lived here for about five years, but we just bought our house like last Monday. But you guys went really, really fast on this budget. Do we have access to this budget now that it's relevant to me as an owner?
Yes, if you go on the website and you find the agenda for either tonight's meeting or the previous public hearing, you'll see a link to all of the budget documents. And so that would include the spreadsheet that you see on the screen right now.
Okay, thank you.
I think there's a few that I have not finished. So I want to continue at this time. Patriotic purposes. Agricultural commission, which includes, you know, obviously culture and recreation and conservation. I think that's the entirety, Julie, correct?
Except for the bonds, yes.
Except for the bonds. You've got to pay the bonds anyways. Any other comments associated with the line by line budget that we just presented?
Okay, so other than, I think what I heard was there consensus on putting the ORYA budget back to $15,000?
Correct.
Yes.
And Ruth is going to send me updated numbers that I will adjust for the next meeting.
Can you send those to us as soon as you get them?
Sure. Yep. So other than that, I did not hear any changes to the budget.
Well, except for Mr. Lacrosse's two comments.
You got it.
I, well, again, consensus being the operative word.
Do I stand alone on this issue?
We haven't heard from Mr. Brown.
Mr. Brown, I am recommending to not make a half-time, full-time police officer and not to hire a fire person. Not that I'm not interested in safety and protection of Town of Lee. Our budget is strained, especially during these particular times. And we had asked, except for things you don't have control on, to try to make the budget as flat as you possibly can. And it's rising up around 6% plus percent, I guess, last time.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Oh, good. You know, you know that I'm fiercely an advocate relative to the fire department and the police department. It's interesting to say, well, okay, let's just not do that. But, but the fact is, and you know, because the chief has shown us where the town is going relative to the number of tickets they write, the number of felonies that have occurred every year. We have seen back-to-back increases. Why? Because we are, and I believe we should look hard at, how many houses did we have last year? How many families have moved in over the past 12 months? How many families have moved in over the past 24 months? All of this combined with the amount of cars that we have, and I forget the number that the DOT actually quoted to us on a daily basis of the, of the traffic that was going through Lee. These cars are also detouring physically and driving shortcuts through Lee, cutting, cutting off, going down 125. We don't even mention Route 4, going, going east and west and the amount of traffic that's increased there. No, I do not agree with reducing, with reducing these two positions. I think, I think we need to do everything possible to, to keep both our police and fire as full staff as we possibly can. These guys are working hard. They're working hard for traffic. They're working hard for felonies. We've seen the numbers on the increases to felony crime coming to lead and what they've gone through to try and respond to it. We need to keep them first class. We need to give them the resources it takes to make it. And if anybody thinks, you know, that, that it's really not that important, hey, take a ride with them one time and see what's going on. Take a look at what High Road looks at 2 o'clock in the morning. Let me tell you, it's scary. So, no, I'm sorry, John, I can't, I can't support either one of those being cut. That's my, that's, that's my position with it.
It's okay. We all have our. It's okay. We all have our ideology. I'm very concerned about taxes in the Towne Lee. I know the Oyster River School budget is going up. If you looked at the figures from last time that I presented, it's going up quite a bit. So the Towne Lee got hit quite hard and we haven't even seen the bond payments come in from the Oyster River Middle School. So I do have concerns. I do hear what you're saying. I know the police and fire do a great job and they are very challenged. We did just recently and the fire department increased to full-time position. So we're slowly getting up there, but this is a lot to swallow. But I do appreciate your comments. Mr. Bugby, do you have comment?
Um, just a clarification, the, the increase you're talking about for the school budget is 9.35% and that does include one bond payment and one interest payment. The subsequent year will have two bond payments and two interest payments. So we're getting only half of the increase at this particular time. So like you, Mr. LaCourse, I'm very sensitive to the tax rate, but for this particular purpose, I'm in agreement with Mr. Brown. I took a look at the increase in the operating budget. It's $283,128 approximately. The new police officer they were proposing is about 2.1% of that particular increase. The new fire officer is 2%. The thing that we have no control over is the increase in terms of retirement rates. That's about 1.6% or $68,000. The daily building rent and other expenses, $50,000. That's 1.17%. The other operating expenses total $42,000, a little more than 1%. So in terms of the increase, the operating budget, since we took out that 15, the, the extra money for the Oyster River Youth, putting in the 15 instead of the 31 something that was in there, the increase for the operating budget is 6.62%. But I think we need those two positions. The fire officer will assist him in terms of scheduling. The model for supporting the fire department is changing and I think we need to change with it. In terms of police officer, I did all that research in terms of the calls that they have and coming in. And there's just, there's too many increases in terms of felonies and those take way longer than everything else. So I'm not very happy about it, but I am in support of those two positions being included in this particular opening budget.
Thank you for your positions. I think we're going to move forward as we just discussed, Julie.
Okay, thank you.
Let's move on to the warrants. Do we have those, please?
Yeah. So before we get started, and we'll talk more about HB 1129 and the alternate voting process and deliberative session and so forth. But I read something today that I received late in the day that suggests that Article 2 is not supposed to be on the warrant. It's supposed to be on the alternative ballot. So I, I'm going to speak again with our attorney tomorrow to try to get clarification on that.
So we're not going to worry about Article 2?
No.
And Article 3 will take care of itself when you redo the numbers?
Yep.
Okay. I'll go through these one by one and Article 4.
And we get a fire truck that's not so shiny for a cheaper price, John? What do you think?
I don't know. I like shiny fire trucks.
Well, they're very expensive. And just to reiterate, Chief Newman, is he here? This $650,000 is not, does not include the trade-in potential, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Unless I hear any negatives, that means that the Board of Selectmen, it's unanimous unless we speak independently.
Yep.
Okay, Article 5. Article 6. Article 7.
Can we have the select, the trustees speak to this particular article for us, please?
You read my mind, please.
Okay, I gotta unmute myself, sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, we're looking at the one that's $100,000.
Yes.
And that would be coming out of a capital reserve fund that has about $130,000, I think, $135,000 in it. And this is the capital reserve fund that needs to have the, the vote of the, of the legislative body to expend it. So this is what we would hope to have in the first, kind of the first phase of the, the library project to renovate and add in addition to it. And therefore, this would be important for us to continue with the project. We're phasing and using the two capital reserve funds, also fundraising, which will complete the project. So it's going to happen in phases and that's why we feel that we should start here where we know we have to ask the legislative body to be, to go, to give us the majority vote on this.
So can I say, I, did the library sit down with the CIP committee, Annie?
Yes, we, we've done that.
So in terms of the things that are planned for 2022, you have shelving replacement at $27,000, carpeting replacement at $10,000, circulation desk at $9,000. Are those still all going to happen or are some of that going to be covered by your renovations that you're doing?
Some of the things have been rearranged, especially to go along with the renovation and the addition. And therefore, in their last meeting, Ruth attended that and rearranged those figures to make sure that it was within the CIP.
So the shelving is, which ones are included? Cause I'm looking at what was presented to the ABC. So if there's an updated one, I don't have that.
Okay, Ruth, you have that with you?
No, I don't. But I, I think you're right, Annie. I think we probably need to change those so they're not coming out of the immediate, out of the 2022 budget. Is that what it says, Scott? I don't have it.
It's, it's planned for fiscal 2022, yes. So if you are taking care of those three items inside of your renovation, then that's fine. If you're not, then you're taking out money that are planned for doing these things. So I guess that's what I'm trying to clear out.
Okay.
So is that something that maybe Ruth, you can get to Julie so she can let us know what that is?
Yes, I'll, I'll, we'll discuss it at the next trustee's meeting, which is Wednesday night. Just to make sure that we, I'm sorry, I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me just to make sure it's on the right dates.
That's why we have multiple iterations so we can get it all right, so.
Yes.
Hi, I was, hello, it's Katranka. I just wanted to say something that part of that money that's in that cap, the library capital reserve fund was initially put there for renovation and for the new building. That was before we had established the other capital reserve fund, the LPLCC one. So some of that money has always been earmarked for renovation and building. And then there is, you know, and I have, I don't have it all broken down, what will go with what. But we figured that we do need to buy some furniture when we move books around. And, you know, we thought this would be an amount to cover it and it still leaves money in the, in the fund for furniture at a later date.
Okay. John, can I, can I interrupt here for a minute?
Please.
Maybe Julie can help me a little bit with this in my memory. I received some, some paperwork today that was sent to me, I, I believe, by, by Julie and, or at least by somebody there. And one of the, the issue was the coming up with the new, how we're going to handle deliberative sessions and rules and regulations to that, et cetera. And one of the issues they brought up was they do not recommend putting any high-ticket items up in the articles. And I was wondering if, if you had seen that and what your reaction to it is because it kind of changes how we're going to go ahead and handle the voting process, if you would, for the articles.
I, I believe Karen Long wants to speak.
Yes, I just, I don't know if Dawn's on yet or not, but Dawn and I attended training on this on Saturday. And what they were intending by that statement of high-ticket items, it would be, for example, if we were going after a bond or something that was a, I don't think $100,000 is what they consider a high-ticket item. I think it's like if we were the bond for the school, which is relevant, but, you know, if we were, you know, trying to get a bond for the town center, for example, or something like that, that, those were the kinds of items that they were saying we wouldn't put in the articles.
Okay. Any more questions?
Could I say one more thing?
Please.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, John. I just wanted to say, obviously there's no new, this is no taxation on this because the money is, is already there. We're just taking it out of the account.
Can, can I ask a question?
Of course.
So is this $100,000 intended, as Mr. Bugby kind of was asking, is this $100,000 intended to do the three or four things that are spelled out in the CIP? Or is this just part of the total amount of what it's going to cost to do the renovation and the addition? And you intend to get the balance of those costs either from donations or from, or by asking the selectmen to spend out of the other capital reserve fund?
I would say the second part of what you said is reasonably accurate. And we can fine tune that at our, at our meeting on Wednesday.
Okay, so the, the $100,000 is not really specifically tied to any one, two, or three items? It's part of the whole?
That's what I, I, that's a good way of looking at it, Julie, and I think that's most important, that that would be the starter for our phasing of, of the project.
I think if that's true, we may want to provide more information in that article.
Okay.
Because one could read this and think that the renovations and additions are only going to cost $100,000.
Oh, I see what you mean. Yes, I understand that.
Yeah, I think the word phasing is important. That was the same area that I was having a question on before as, you know, is this covering just the, you know, infrastructure support of the library of renovation? Or is this part of the additional, the new addition? I wasn't sure. So if we can explain it better, we'd be, I'd better have a chance of passing.
So, John, I would like to propose that we put seven on hold just to find out more information, please?
Yes. Article 8.
Same request, same request to the trustees, they can explain this one, please.
Trustees, Article 8.
Well, if you recall, last year we wanted to put money into this account and the select board said no and kept it off the warrant. So we're just trying to do a little catch-up, I guess, would be one way to put it. And this is going, would be going into the account that the select board have, are the agents to extend.
So I'm a little confused. So is this the library capital reserve or is it the library building capital reserve fund?
It's the one that has the most money in it.
It's the one, I assume that the, the language is correct. So why do you want $24,000, $5,000 to go into that?
Well, we have been taking money out of there and we just want to be ready to meet expenses. One of the, I mean, we will be phasing the, the building because, as you know, we're not going for a bond so that we can do it all at once. And phasing is a little more expensive than doing it all at once. But we're doing it as we can pay for and money has come out of there. And as I said, we tried to put money in last year. Didn't work, so we're trying again.
So stepping back just a little bit, because as of June 30th, 2020, there's $384,000 approximately in the building capital reserve fund and almost $131,000 in the regular library capital reserve fund. What is this internal renovation and expansion total going to be? I, I'm a little bit confused that you want even more money than what you already have in those two funds. So if somebody can clarify that for me, that would be great.
We're still working on the, on the designated final price of the whole thing. We think it'll be around $800,000. And we're, we're hoping that fundraising will kick in for at least $200,000.
Okay, so you're looking for $600,000. So the hundred you're asking for, so you're looking for another $120,000, $130,000 in addition to what's already there?
Yes. Oh, was I muted?
No, I heard you. I heard you.
Oh, now you're muted.
Don't have to get a long thermometer.
So Mr. Bugby, what's your comment?
I'm not in favor of it at this particular time.
Okay.
Could I speak to this, please?
You can.
Um, this is really no different than the fire department putting money in to do a cistern at some point in time by the fire engine. This is, or the town hall has done this in the past as well, adding to the, to the building reserve funds. It, it's, it's really just trying to replenish money so that there, or money is trying to replenish the fund such that the money will be available when and if the time comes to spend it. I mean, there's ongoing improvements that can be made to every department. And this is merely the library trustees attempting to be prudent and responsible by saving a little bit every year in order to be that person or that group. So I'm not certain why there's such a question about this. Even if the renovation and expansion was, wasn't taking place, it would still be the right thing to do to continually build this fund so that when in fact you do need to do something, maybe it's furniture, maybe it's a, a deck, whatever, whatever it might be, that you have in fact the monies and you're not going back to the town for a large amount.
I happen to agree with that.
Well, that would be appropriate if it's going into the other fund. If it's for the building itself, that's what we have the town buildings capital reserve fund. Cause that's where we take out things for fixing the furnace, the roof or whatever. That's what that particular fund is for. So if it was going into the library, the library capital reserve fund, that would be something different.
I, I don't really see it as different because like I just said, you know, the fire department waited however many years to buy a fire truck. It's the same idea. We're depositing money so that we have money to spend when, when the time comes that we have a more big-ticket item. And in this particular case, we have a renovation that's potentially going to take place as well as an addition. What we can do and what we can't do is all gated by the fact that we would be responsible by putting these small amounts of money away.
Okay, but I guess the thing that's getting me is if it's for the expansion in terms of this, this whole thing that you guys are working on, I'm not in favor of spending $800,000 to renovate and expand the library at this particular time. I'm not in favor of that.
But we're not asking for $800,000 because much of this has been raised by the foundation and there's going to be further fundraising taking place. been raised by the foundation, and there's going to be further fundraising taking place.
But you're still asking the town to contribute even more than what's in those two accounts already. That's the problem I'm having.
I'm asking the town, I would think that this would be on the ballot every year, that we would constantly be replenishing our funds, just the same as the police department does, and the fire department does, and the other departments as well.
I'd like to put this one on the whole, just like we did with respect to number seven.
I do want to point out that we're only asking, what we're asking the town for this year is twenty-five thousand dollars. The hundred thousand dollars is just there. We just need town approval, I mean, the deliberative body, whatever proper word is, to take it out of that account. But it's already there, and there's no new taxation on the hundred thousand. And that's part of, and that's part of the money when we add up what we have. We're counting that a hundred thousand.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, you have an opinion?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. All right, can we put this one on hold, just like, they seem to be tied together, till we get more information on seven. Okay, article nine. Article.
Oh, I'd like to propose that we reduce that to forty thousand.
The, this is the highway equipment capital reserve fund?
Yep.
Can I ask how you came up with that number, Scott?
It's an analysis I did for the ABC. I think, just based on particular needs, I think this also gets back to the conversation we had about looking at what is in the CIP and what we're planning for. I think we need to go through that particular exercise to make sure we're planning appropriately. Some of these things in the CIP I don't agree with. Maybe the both of you do. I don't. And I think we need to have some kind of triage, if you will, in terms of what we're saving for, and how we're going to spend the money to provide funds for those particular purchases, so.
I'll go along with that, as long as we apply that same policy to all of the issues that are up in the big dollars.
All right. Well, I'm not just proposing this for highway. I'm proposing it for every single one that's in there in the CIP. I'm not just singling out the highway department.
But right now, just article nine.
It's article nine. I would propose that we reduce that to forty thousand.
Yeah, Mr. Brown says yes. Let's go with it. Article ten, which is the road and bridge. Article eleven, transfer station equipment. Article twelve, which is fifty thousand dollars into the town buildings capital reserve fund. I thought we removed article eleven before, excuse me, thirteen.
I thought we did, too. I'm not in favor of thirteen at this time.
Yep, I don't support thirteen. So Julie, if you remove that, please.
Can you scroll up on your screen? Sorry, I've got three things going.
Yeah, that's better.
Here we go.
Is that you again, John?
No, it's not me.
It's me, it's me.
Not me. I have enough problems. All right, article fourteen. Article fifteen.
Well, fourteen, ABC is recommending thirty.
But Julie says it's not needed, so I'm going with fifteen.
Well, I think the point that the ABC was trying to make is, we have some unfunded liabilities, and in the course of, I believe they said, three years, that would bring us to fully fund those particular liabilities.
Scott, was the ABC looking at that in total? In other words, yes, if all of your department heads left at the same time, or in the same fiscal year, it would be a very big hit to that fund. Is that how you're looking to fully, I mean, is that the analysis you're using to fully fund it?
Yes, this is based on the spreadsheet you gave us, in terms of what that particular, and not, and we don't anticipate that every single person that works for the town is going to leave all at once.
Right.
But if they did, it's one of those things in terms of unfunded liabilities.
Yes, that's, that's true. If we all left at the same time, there would be an issue.
Yeah.
Which.
I doubt.
There'd be more than one issue, but yes.
There'd be real issues around this place, more than you can even imagine.
And I think that was the point they're trying to make, that there's an unfunded liability there.
Well, I do realize it, but at the same time, we're, operating budget is climbing, and now we're dealing with articles. So I'd rather leave it at fifteen. I think we've got some breathing space.
Well, even if you didn't, you could even eliminate it, John. I believe there's, what, a hundred and, a hundred and twenty, oh, sixty-nine, almost seventy thousand in there, and we've just put another fifteen, so there's eighty-five in there.
Well, that's why I think fifteen is fine. It moves in that direction.
Okay.
You okay, Mr. Brown?
I'm okay with that.
Good. Article fifteen. Article sixteen. This is the lucky seven, isn't it? What do you think about that?
I asked a question about that last time. I guess that's how it has to be worried.
Article seventeen. And this article eighteen was fixed, right, from last time?
Yeah, it should only be forty-five hundred, and that's what it is.
Okay, article eighteen. So what I hear is that, I'm just going to repeat it, article two is taken off for now. Article seven and eight is on hold, and then article thirteen is removed.
And article nine is reduced to forty thousand dollars.
Any comments at this point about the warrants in the article?
So this is our second budget discussion. When do we have to finalize this, Julie? Is it twenty-fifth?
We have to post it by the twenty-fifth. We have a meeting scheduled.
Nineteenth?
I believe it is the nineteenth, to finalize.
All right. So if the library can get back to us on those things we asked for as soon as possible, so we can take a look at that stuff before the meeting on the nineteenth, that would be great.
Okay, we meet on Wednesday, so we'll get to you as soon as we can after that.
Thank you.
And then the last thing we have to do is, the board has to vote to approve the corrected default budget, DRA, fixed the portal. So this is the correct default budget.
So can you highlight the things that are different than last year?
The only thing that's different is the bond interest payment.
That's it? Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So I move to approve the default budget as presented and revised.
Second.
Discussion.
Just a question. So, I know we haven't talked about this, but the way we're doing voting, that question that we took out number two, if they say, no, we're not agreeable to that, that's what our budget's going to be, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And what happens with all the warrant articles?
None of them are approved.
They do not pass.
So, which means that we have to probably come back and do something for September first, it says?
I believe so.
Okay.
I mean, as, as with any year, if there is, if voters don't approve the operating budget, the board has an opportunity to call a special meeting.
Okay. I'm just asking these questions for people that haven't been through the process, so they know.
Yeah, point of clarification, absolutely. It's been moved and seconded, we're in the middle of discussion. Anything else? Roll call vote, Mr. Bugby.
Can I ask a question in terms of, I'm still discussing, John?
Okay.
At the top of this particular thing for the town warrant, it says you're notified to be at the public safety facility, so that will be tweaked to wherever we happen to have the drive-in voting, or whatever.
Yes, yeah, and we'll be talking about that later.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
All right. It's been first and second, and then discussed. Roll call vote, Mr. Bugby.
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. LaCourts, yes. Any further comments on the articles that were presented and discussed, the default budget, or anything else associated with the proposed budget? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. Thank you very much.
You did ask for other comments for the people, right, John?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you.
Next item.
I'm sorry, can I make a suggestion, and that the board might consider removing the item in the consent agenda, that's the trail committee application approval, since a number of people are here for that, and take that up now?
Can we just do the hall of number nine?
Yes, all of it at this point. Therefore, as my prerogative as chairperson, I move to accept the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
Second. Oh.
Any discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call vote, Mr. Bugby.
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. LaCourts, yes, motion carries.
Did you want to hear from any of the prospective trail committee people?
I would like to hear that.
Or do any of them, or do any of them want to speak?
If they'd like to speak, they can have the floor.
So I would like to speak first. This is Deb Sugarman, head of the new Lee Trails Committee. So at our last meeting, the Lee Conservation Commission voted to develop a Lee Trails Committee, and they put me in charge of it, which is very exciting. I'm excited about that. I put out a little blurb on the neighborly Facebook page, and we put out a blurb in the Eek Prior, and I've gotten, up to now, nineteen people responded with interest beyond the committee. I know.
Wow.
And three people responded that they didn't necessarily want to be on the committee, but they wanted to help out with workdays. So we've had a tremendous response to this. And I think it's, it's because so many people have been using the trails, and people know the trails, they know how much use they get, they know what kind of shape they're in, because there's so much use on them. So tonight, we have, you have six applications, and some of the people are here. The first one is Paul McCom, oh, I can't, I knew I could, wouldn't be able to pronounce it, McComiskey, there you go. Tom Hooper, Leslie Chinberg, Lisa Sporopolis, Martin Thornton, and Stephen Toll. And so next, at your next meeting, you have two applications that didn't make it into tonight's meeting, and you may have a couple more. We'll see. But yeah, if somebody wants to speak, any of those people, that would be great.
Floor is open.
Well, I'd like to speak, John, if you don't mind. I have a question, I have a question, because the fact is, we had a, what I'll call a fairly serious issue with a Lee resident who, whose property backs up to a, to a trail close to Little River Park, and has had a lot of issues with how the people were acting, if you would, and doing actual damage to her property. I was wondering what your charge is as Trails Committee, what is, what is it you're going to do?
That's a great question. Our basic charge is to maintain the trails of Lee. And at this point, we have three main trails, or three main areas that we're going to be looking at. Little River Park, Maude Jones Forest, and the town forest behind the library. The spot that you're talking about is, is not part of the town. It's part of the snowmobile club, so we're not responsible for that piece at this point. So, but basically, what we're going to do is, the first, our first charge is to do an inventory of all the trails, to find out what condition the trails are in, what needs to be done, and then to make a three- to five-year plan about how to, how to approach that, and how to get the things done. Things like bridges, blazing, things like that. Our next charge will be to look at all the other land that the town owns, to see if there's other places where we can either develop trails, or make the trails that are already there but not used very much, in better shape, so that more people can use them. So, yeah, it's a great question, Karen. I think, I mean, I can help you work on that, but I think at this point, it's the snowmobile clubs.
Well, one of my issues, well, I won't disagree with that, but I think one of the big issues that needs to be looked at, as these sales, as these trails get, if you would, cleaned up, and put into more use, and you get more traffic, is the signage. The signage on some of those trails is very, very poor.
I would agree with that.
Very misleading, and needs to be a little stronger, I think, in some cases. So I would really appreciate looking hard at the signage on these trails.
That's part of our, our trail inventory. Yep, signage is a big thing. And I would say that most of the trails need some work on the signage piece, yes. So, yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you for your comments, and I find this quite exciting, that there's so many people interested in this Trail Committee. Obviously, it's a good opportunity to get out and see what's really in the town of Lee through the trail system. So, congratulations that you're chairing it, and I'm looking forward to see what the kind of work that's going to happen.
Well, we might be asking you to help. You never know.
You never know. I might learn something. Anybody else would like to speak about, especially people who are now new volunteers? It's okay, you don't have to.
This is Martin Thornton. I want to thank Deb for reaching out to people to come help on the trails. Been walking them for twenty-five years in Lee, and often looked at, well, what can I do to help improve the trails or maintain them? And so this is a great opportunity to pitch in and help out. So I want to thank her for coordinating this up.
Thanks.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much. We'll look forward to be able to approving new membership, additional membership.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Next item of business, the police chief. You see there?
Yeah, sorry about that. As with everything else, the price of cruisers and our equipment keeps going up. And last year was the first year that we actually had a vehicle that we were taking offline that was relatively good condition. So I rolled the dice and asked what it was worth on a trade-in, and it was worth three thousand dollars, which was more than we would have got it if we auctioned it. So last year, we traded that car in, and again, this year, the cruisers went up a couple thousand dollars, and the car we're taking offline is, again, worth three thousand dollars for trade-in. So it'll help offset the increase. So just looking for permission to trade it in.
And this will give you how many cars now?
It'll keep us at, because we're actually getting, we'll actually be getting rid of two cars and only replacing one this year.
Ah, okay.
We had a, we still had the 2013 that I had up until I got the Tahoe.
Mm-hmm.
So we got rid of that, or we're going to be auctioning that off as soon as I get ahold of Julie. I just know she's been busy, and, and then we'll trade one car in, so we'll go one-for-one this year. Well, it's actually 2020's cruiser, but we're not getting it until now.
Yeah, I got you. I figured that one out. Any questions for the chief?
No.
Hearing none, I move to approve our trading in a 2016 police cruiser towards the purchase of a new 2021 Dodge Charger Police Cruiser from Force Motors, as requested. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion?
No.
Hearing none. Mr. Brown, your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Ms. LaCourts, yes. Motion carries. Congratulations, chief.
Thank you.
Got anything else, chief?
That's it for now.
Thank you very much.
Don, can I go back to something in nine?
Nine.
Have the administrative staff.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Administrative staff on the chief's payment in lieu of vacation time. Just update our titles. On that one, Mr. Brown voted to chairperson, so maybe we can update those forms?
Yep.
Thank you.
Minor indiscretions, right? Minor indiscretions, right?
Well, you know.
Yeah. True. Okay, Scott, you've got the floor.
Good evening. Just wanted to update the board. A couple of weeks ago, I had an issue in my office with the roof leaking. I found water damage down the side of the window on the flag side of the building. Talked to Bill Stevens, he came down, we took a look at it, we popped the ceiling tiles and found, with Julie showing, multiple areas where water was leaking through the roof, up into the ceiling above my office. And it soaked all of the insulation, it had the puddles and the vapor barrier. So he got the roofers to come back and look at it, a new company. The issue that they came up with was the previous roofer installed the shingles underneath the metal roof that's over in that area. We have a ton of water that comes down in front of the side door that leads into our area. We have a lot of ice damming and icicles, so they just decided to put the metal roofing up, which then hurt my office. That's been fixed for now. According to Bill Stevens, they removed the shingles from behind the metal roof and put it on top so that the snow wouldn't melt and come into the office. So we got that situated. We had Insurance Comm come in, I don't know how long this has been going on. They removed all the insulation, some of the ceiling tiles were damaged. If you see where the, the vent is up in the ceiling there, I came back into my office later in the day and it, the water was just pouring out of that. It seemed like the water got too much in the vapor barrier. Pulled it down from the ceiling and it started leaking where the staple had gone through the plastic. So Shercom came, it was roughly $1,800, they removed the walls, insulation, took that all out. Some of the wood was damaged, just wet. So they left fans in my office for four days with a dehumidifier. And then I recently got an estimate to replace everything, which the new one was $4,300, Julie?
I think so.
So we have that scheduled for them to come back in and fix everything.
Can I, can I ask a question? I, I kind of find it hard to believe that this is the only leak inside that building.
We did check.
I'm wondering if we need to have the whole building looked at and then contract to fix the leak?
I, I can tell you on our side, for about a year, my office and directly in line on the other side of the wall is the administrative office. And we will frequently hear dripping. I believe Scott was over one day and heard it, but Bill and I pulled the ceiling tiles up and we can't find where it's coming from, but there's obviously a drip coming from somewhere, but we can't find it. At certain days, there's, there's no rhyme or reason at this time of year.
Well, I'm not, I'm not trying to postpone the chief's, the chief's office but I am trying to say, hey, let's, if we're gonna, if we're gonna get into this a little bit and hire some people to look or fix or whatever, we should look at certainly the upper floor to see what's going on there. It doesn't necessarily mean it comes all the way down to the lower floor. So I would just like somebody, hire somebody to just look the whole building over so we don't have any real surprises coming after this.
Now, I understand, Scott, that the insurance company is covering some of this?
Correct, Julie put a claim in, and they said they were covering it with our deductible.
Great.
They're covering everything but our $1,000 deductible.
So when do you think you'll be operational?
I sent in the contract today. Probably the end of the week they'll start.
So where are you working from?
I'm in the EOC right now.
Okay, you have to be somewhere. Any other questions for the chief?
No. No.
Do you need anything, Julie?
No.
Okay. I kind of agree with Carrie, there's probably other dripages going on in that building. It's just a huge building with a lot of roof on it. And there's always opportunities. So I think we're going to have to cross that bridge sometime in the near future and maybe have an inspector come in or something along that way.
I will say that my office, there's nothing above me, there's no second floor, it's all roof above me. So we did check the office across the hall from me, and there was no water damage in his office either. So we've, being Tom, we've checked a couple places and seems like mine's the only one. I'm lucky.
You're the lucky one, I guess, at this point. Thank you, Scott, appreciate it. Next item. The Public Works Manager. I saw him, I know he's here.
I'm here.
Good.
All right, so, oh, a few weeks ago, I had asked about the pickup truck and you told me to get more information. So I went to the state bid and this isn't the actual low bidder for the state, the low bidder for the state bid was a Dodge. We looked at Dodge and we didn't feel comfortable purchasing a Dodge, they've had a lot of transmission issues. So we went with the next lowest bidder, which was the Ford. We weren't, I'm personally not fond with Ford because of the aluminum bed. But they've upgraded their aluminum beds to the military-grade aluminum, so they're holding up a lot better. I also had said that we were going to look at an F250 or a 2500 instead of the 35. But if we want to put a spreader in the back of it, like we did with the one ton, the 3500 was going to end up being the way to go. So if you look at the actual paperwork down, Ford included a plow with their bid. We can get the plow through Mark Coustra and Fisher Plows of Lee for cheaper than the plow through the Ford contract. And then the pickup truck spreader is also included in that price. So the total price for the Ford pickup truck without the plow, but including a bed liner, which isn't on there, would be $32,709. And then you add the pickup truck in, or yeah, you add the spreader in and you add the plow, and that gives you the total of $43,603.
Questions for the Public Works Manager?
The town discount is different on both of those pieces of equipment?
That, I do not know, that came right from Mark, I think probably because they want to sell more spreaders because not a lot of towns are buying Polycasters, so they're trying to give a bigger discount on it.
Okay.
They're sorry, yeah, the Polycaster, I think they're just trying to give a bigger discount. If you guys do choose to do this, the only thing I would need is, in order to get that discount, I need a signed letter from the chairman of the Select Board, so Mark can purchase the spreader and the plows from Fisher under that discount.
I got you.
It's all part of Fisher Plows municipal, municipal bid. It has nothing to do with Fisher Plows of Lee, that's what Fisher chooses to give for the municipal discount.
I'm good.
Go ahead.
No, I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I'm good.
Okay. Therefore, I move to authorize the Public Works Manager into, enter into a contract from McCallan Ford for the purchase of a new 2021 Ford F350 pickup truck in amount not to exceed $32,709. And to authorize the Public Works Manager to enter into a contract with Fisher Plows of Lee to purchase a new Fisher plow and Polycaster spreader for the new pickup truck in amount not to exceed $5,922 with a plow and $5,972.50 for the spreader. Total funds of $43,603.50 to come from the Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
The spreader is actually $4,972.50.
$4,972.50, thank you. What did I say?
$5,000.
And Scott, you didn't catch me?
I figured that was your cut, John. That was your, that was your, that was your part.
Oh, I appreciate that. The motion's entered.
You could use the money to get a new backdrop.
You know, I could do that. I mean, there's always a great possibility to change things around. And maybe I'll take something different then.
All right.
Well, you've got the same one as Steve.
Yeah, mine is, I wanted to be matching at this point.
I didn't even notice that.
See, what happened?
It's like you're sitting in front of an aquarium or something.
Yeah, just got to wait for the fish to go by. Okay, the motion has been first and seconded, we've had full discussion. Roll call vote, Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Lacourse, yes, motion carries. Okay, I think there's another listing on here for Steve, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, so last week, the dealer that we bought our Western Star truck off of called because the town of Berwick wanted to buy a Western Star, and they needed to see what a municipal Western Star looked like. So they came over with the, with the salesman and they looked at it. And while the salesman was there, I just asked randomly if they had any used Western Star roll-off trucks. And they did. And we got talking about it and the idea of a five-year lease was put up, so we could actually and I'm just putting this out there so you guys have full disclosure, we actually could lease a truck for a tiny bit over what the FY21 hauling cost would be and overage would be $229 over the hauling costs. So we could actually lease a truck and do it a lot of the, the same way that Tom does for his new Cruiser, it's already included in his budget. The only difference would be is the first payment would have to come out of a trust fund. And in the papers that are there from the proposals, I just asked them to give us the price of a brand-new truck with the same equipment as the one that they actually brought down and showed us last week. So you guys could see what the difference between the price and the payments would be. But leasing a truck to own and owning it outright after the five years was never anything that we, I'd even considered being a possibility before. Because in my mind, when you lease it, you still owe money at the end of it. Like when you would lease a truck, a pickup truck, but this is different, you actually own it outright after the five years.
There's more to it than just leasing a truck, there's personnel issues, correct? Do you have enough manpower to handle this?
So with the increases in the personnel budget in the Highway Department we made last year and with actually COVID has made it so we've cut the personnel in the Highway Department, in the transfer station, it's worked out well. I can pay for the personnel hauling costs out of what is currently funded. And I have Randy Stevens who would want to drive it, and then I have two private, or yeah, two private, two contractors that plow in the wintertime that could also come in and haul the trash in the wintertime, or in the summertime. And then fuel-wise, we had left the budget a little bit higher for diesel fuel in the Highway Department because we were planning on using it for a sandpit, which that has fallen apart because of zoning issues. So the little bit of access in the Highway Department for fuel that we have would pay for the operating cost of, for the fuel for the truck.
Steve, if you don't mind, let me ask a question. How much this, this truck that you're talking about leasing, how much commonality is there between this truck and, and the Western Star that we, that we just bought, what, a year, two years?
The motor in it is exactly the same, the only difference is, is the motor in the plow truck has been turned down because we don't need the horsepower in it. So this truck is the same exact motor, but they've turned up the fuel, so it gets more horsepower. And then this truck has, is a tri-axle, so it's a ten-wheeler plus a tag axle compared to just a six-wheeler.
So relative to maintenance, relative to maintenance, both trucks are identical?
Yes, the only difference is tires. At, at some point on the truck, you'd have to spend more money in tires than the normal truck that we currently own. But the tires on it are brand-new, so you wouldn't be looking at buying tires for it for probably four or five years with the amount of mileage that it would get, just going to turnkey and back. And then you can save money because the steer tires, you could rotate back to the tag axle because the tag axle goes, gets half the amount of use as every other tire because you're not running it on your return trip.
But we already have the tooling and the experience, et cetera, for maintenance of this truck.
Yes, yes, we do.
And how much you think this is going to save us, Steve?
Um, so if you were to take the money out of the Highway Trust Fund, because it has the most amount of money in it for the $31,629.18. And then we were to make because the, the contract with Shipyard ends in a year. If you could end the contract early or cut them back and only make them haul one time a year, you make an early payment, so you make another $31,000 payment in July. You'd take a year off the lease. By the end of that, we'll just go with the five years because that's what it currently stays. By the end of that five years, you cut your budget and hauling off, there wouldn't be a hauling budget. So in five years, you could cut $31,400, which is what the current hauling budget is. Because with the NRA, we only pay a hauling fee if it's not included in the price, and we very rarely have a hauling fee through them that is not included in the price, other than scrap metal, which we would then haul ourselves at that point. So there would be no more hauling fees.
I, um, may I speak?
Please.
I would want to see on paper a full financial analysis of this. Because I got to be honest, I'm finding it hard to believe this isn't going to end up costing us more money. It's certainly going to increase our liability. What happens, Steve, if this truck breaks down?
We go to the Public Works Mutual aid and call our neighbors.
Do we know for a fact that they will do that?
I've talked to Durham and they said we would, as long as we would do it back with them if their truck broke.
Same thing happens with Epping. Epping's already offered that to the cooperative as well.
I, I would just want to see all of this. I, I would think the board would want to see all of this on paper with some pretty deep dive into the costs, the personnel costs, the liability costs, all of it. Second thing, the board can approve a lease, but not the appropriation of a multi-year lease for a piece of equipment like this. So this would have to be a warrant article.
Well, personally, I think it's something that we should explore. I think we need to look at the numbers like Julie said. Steve's put a lot of it into his memo that he sent to all of us, so I would like us to explore this. And if we have to put it on the warrant, let's do it. Because I think in terms of five years down the road, if we can save that money, because the 31-4 in terms of hauling fee, that's what it is now. In five years, we do not know what it's going to be. Other, other companies, like Lamprey was looking in terms of hauling costs, those are going up. So, you know, 31-4 is like the minimum, kind of. But yeah, I agree, there's costs. If Steve thinks he can handle it inside of his budget with what he's got now, that's great. But let's document all those particular expenses because we've got tires, we've got maintenance costs, we've got fuel costs, we've got personnel costs.
We've got insurance, liability.
And, yes.
So I agree with Scott's points.
Registration as well.
So Steve, you think you can work on some of that material for us?
Yep.
Yeah, I would like to take an approach to see how we can get it done as opposed to why we can't.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, just, the next time we meet is the nineteenth to finalize the warrant, so it has to be done by the nineteenth. Is that something you can do, Steve? Working with Julie?
The only thing I can't guarantee is that truck, the used one will be there on the nineteenth, but I wasn't asking anyone to buy anything tonight anyway, so.
All right.
Which was putting it forward as an option to move forward in the future.
I think it's interesting and it should be pursued. I agreed. We need to see the numbers and, um, I think there's opportunity. I'm concerned, my only concern at this point is personnel down the road. Right now, we're in good shape, personnel. But we don't know what it's gonna look like five years from now.
Well, right at the moment, Steve, refresh my memory, this particular truck requires a CDLB, and you've got how many people that have that?
It's a CDLB and I currently have six that can drive it.
Yeah.
Good.
Because they need the CDL, John, to do the town truck, so.
Yes, they do.
So if we hire somebody in the Highway Department, they don't have a CDL, then shame on us.
That's right.
We don't want to get caught like that, that's for sure. Anything else, Steve?
No, that's it.
Thank you very much. Next item. Mr. Bugby, you have the floor.
Julie, can you share the document that I sent to you earlier?
It's right there.
Oh, there we go. So.
She's ahead of you.
She's always ahead of me. So, um, the Town Hall renovation committee has been working with, um, WME, who is the company that, uh, purchased, um, AECM, the ones that did the assessment on the parish house in the Town Hall for us.
Yes.
So the committee's been working with in terms of, um, the services to get, get from these particular, from this particular company. So this is a list of the particular services. There's three issues still that are outstanding that we're working with him. They will not change the cost of this particular service. There's just more wording, what building codes are gonna be used, and what's gonna be included in the revised assessment. Um, so we're asking them to revise the March two thousand and twenty assessment as well. So we can include the alarms, we can include, um, the, um, fire suppression system. Um, so if those are included in the assessment, that's something that L-Chip will consider funding. So those are expensive items. Um, I don't know if the board has any questions. We can go through each one of these particular things, but it details exactly what they're gonna give us. They can do it in, uh, he mentions twelve weeks, but it total is gonna be about, uh, excuse me, he mentions ten weeks, his total's gonna be about twelve weeks. There's some time in there for us to uh, evaluate what they're gonna design for us, if there needs to be any tweaks or anything like that, so.
I did get it and I did read through it. It's quite detailed.
Yeah, I need to get a copy, uh, if, could just send a copy, uh, to me so I can print it out.
Uh, Julie should have done that already.
I did. As soon as you sent it to me, I sent it to John and Carrie.
Okay.
Carrie, you should have it.
I'll look for it.
It's there, somewhere.
All right. Um, so we need permission to expend those monies from the Town Building Capital Reserve Fund so we can start this particular process?
Yeah.
What monies?
The monies for this particular service.
Okay, we gotta get to the bottom of it there.
Yeah, scroll to the bottom. Always put the costs on the bottom.
Sixty-two thousand, one hundred.
Yep. So what this does for us, it gives us all the materials we need to apply for the L-Chip grant, the construction documents, the fire suppression design, that's the sprinkler system, uh, elevator system design. We're looking at, either looking at something like a little, like the library's plan to do, or a regular elevator, um, but probably not a regular elevator. Um, and also determining construction costs, estimates, these are things that L-Chip needs. Meeting with the committee. The next to last thing is historic preservationist. This is the person that's gonna help us with the L-Chip application process to make sure we've got all of our Ts crossed and our Is dotted. Uh, and the last one is just direct costs in terms of travel and reproduction for the, the deliverables they're giving us, so.
I need to say something at this time. I'm getting very skittish about this when I heard the price tag about eight hundred thousand last time.
Yeah.
This is I'm getting concerned that we're pouring a lot of money into this building for renovation, which it does need, but we're losing sight of where we should be, which is a new municipal building. We can't stay in the daily building forever.
Yep.
I take it four or five years, maybe at this point, that should give us enough time to reboot, the opportunity to go after a new municipal building. Uh, so this is a lot of money to swallow, uh, to renovate a, a Town Hall. I know it, it is the infrastructure support as well. I do realize that.
Yeah, there's infrastructure in there as well.
I, I do realize it, but I think we're moving in the wrong direction, so I'm not interested in moving forward at this time.
Well, the committee did what this board asked them to do.
And I appreciate it.
The, uh, infrastructure as well. So the infrastructure includes a new well system, a new septic system, uh, and a new parking lot, so.
But this does not get us to a new municipal building.
No, it does not, because that's not what you instructed us to do.
And, and I appreciate it, but at this time, after looking at the last presentation, the amount of money that's going in this direction, I feel we should stall for a period of time so we can regroup ourselves.
Well, John, what, what would be your alternative? I mean, we're not gonna let the, this Town Hall just fall apart into rubble, right? It's a historic, it's a historic building. Uh, I believe the Historical Society has a lot to say about what condition this building should be taken to uh, and what should happen to it in the long term, but that's where we are. Surely, we have to do something to keep this building from deteriorating or make a decision on, hey, we're just gonna let the sucker rot away.
No, I think there's something we can do. I mean, obviously, still a useful building. We were just in there. It still is a reasonable meeting space. Uh, you know, it, it still can be used even today if we put the heat on. Uh, so it, it has use at this point. We can maintain it as much as we can. But as we move in this direction, and there's no guarantee with the L-Chip, we will see these funds. I mean, I think there's risk there. So, uh, looking at this from a conservative point of view and the opportunity to go for a new municipal building, which we think we definitely need. Um, it, right now, we have a, a lease that we can stay in the daily building, but maybe the lease will not be renewable in the future. Then where will we be without a new municipal building? We're not gonna move back into the renovated Town Hall. That's just not gonna happen.
Oh, I, I agree with you, John. I'm just trying to understand what uh, I mean, if we want to try and, and float, whether it's this coming, this coming session or the next, a, a new, a new Town Hall, fine, we can do that. Uh, but the, the, the question is, what do we do with this building? If this is what we think is too much, you know, how do we, how do we trim it down and get it down to where it's occupiable, but not necessarily, uh, if you would, not necessarily meant to be a, a ten-year, this is where we're gonna be in Town Hall building.
I, I think you're moving in my direction. Can we just maintain it as best as we can, that it's useful for people who might want to meet there uh, and use it as a meeting facility? Uh, until we can get our hands on to a new municip-, new municipal building, then we can go back and do a part of the new municipal building will be doing some of that infrastructure that was put together by this committee as well.
And I think that's the biggest question is, what, you know, when you talk about a new building, uh, are we gonna start off with, yeah, it's a new building, but here's the cap on the price we're willing to spend for a new building? Otherwise, what we do is we design a building. It's beautiful, it's wonderful, it's modern, and it's expensive, and the voters vote it down.
That's, that's possible. I think that we gotta play that risk because where can we go if we move out of the daily building?
Well, we've, we've got a lease there for three years plus two more extensions, so we got nine years.
Mm-hmm.
So we need to do something with this particular structure. Um, and all I can say is the committee's worked hard on this. We did what the board charges to do, so that's where we are. I would like to push the question. Uh, I moved to expend up to sixty-two thousand, one hundred dollars from the Town Buildings Capital Reserve Fund to do the renovate, uh, excuse me, the rehabilitation of the Town Hall and the associated, uh, features in terms of expanding the well, uh, creating new well, excuse me, uh, creating a septic system, expanding the parking lot.
Uh, I'll second that, but I want to add something if you don't mind. Um, I would like to, for you to revisit this. I don't understand, for instance, the elevator, if we're not gonna let people on the second floor. Uh, so I, I would just like it reviewed to see what cost cuts might be able to be done uh, uh, before we, we go ahead and sign a contract.
The.
Actually, I, at, at this point, did he second it?
Yes, he did.
Okay. At, at this point, though, why are we moving forward on this if we're asking the committee to go back and give us an alternate plan? I don't want to move on anything and, and just as we asked the, uh, previous department head, uh, Steve, to go back and do a, an in-depth analysis. If there's things that have to be removed, it should be discussed now and not vote on a budget without knowing what's really gonna be in it.
Okay, I'll, 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 I agree with you on that, John.
Can you do that again, John? I'm, I'm not sure if I followed you.
I don't want to move on this. I'm gonna vote no for this because I don't want to spend this amount of money at this point for, uh, moving forward as per my previous discussion. If the, uh, the committee who's done a wonderful job, uh, and trying to put this thing together, put a lot of hours into it, uh, as Mr. Brown had said, you know, why the elevator? Is there some way we can cut off some of these costs to make it more palatable at this point? Maybe that's a consideration. I just want a
Yep.
rehabilitated facility that can be used temporarily for the next several years.
All right, let me address your first point first. Um, the fire suppression system, that's something the fire chief, he didn't say we should, but that's something that should be considered. That is an option. If the board doesn't even want to consider that, we can take that right off the top. The same thing with the elevator system. One of the things we thought that it's important that all of our particular town facilities should be handicap accessible. Uh, and that's one of the things we're dealing with. If the board doesn't even want to consider that, we can take that off. We just need direction. The committee needs direction in terms of what the board would consider and what the board wouldn't consider.
Scott, Scott, let me interrupt you. I'm sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
The, the, uh, the, for instance, the elevator issue, et cetera, and being ADA compliant, if you close off the upper floor so that it's not in use, you don't have to worry about it being ADA compliant because nobody goes up there.
That is true, and that's the, one of the most export parts of that particular structure. So the committee thought we should at least give the board the option to, if you want to make it accessible, this is how much it would cost.
Okay.
So if the board is telling me, or telling the committee, excuse me, that they will not even consider a fire suppression system in that structure, and they're not considering making the second floor, uh, publicly accessible, then that particular price gets reduced by that fifteen thousand dollars, so now we're down to about forty-seven.
I think all the board is saying is, take a hard look, please, and see what could be taken out uh, to get the cost down and get the building in a decent shape, uh, on the first floor, whatever, whatever.
Well, that would, that would be without those two particular things.
Right.
And, um, the other aspect of this is I remember at some of our early discussions, we talked about maybe five hundred thousand dollars or something, or, or four hundred thousand.
Yep.
You know, now it's climbed to something that's, uh, it's, it's very steep at this point.
That's because the board instructed us to include the septic system, the well, and the extended parking lot. That's what expanded this particular cost. Those particular costs are about hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So that's what expanded the cost, and those particular things are gonna serve us down the road in terms of when you go for that other building. The well can be utilized, the septic system probably can't, but you're gonna need expanded parking as well, so.
Let me, uh, try this out for size because I still have in, interest in moving forward with some aspects of this. Can I ask the, um, Mr. Brown to remove his second? To allow me to have enough time to really read through this thing in detail, and if I have questions, I know who I can go to. And then we can bring it forth and bring it back at our next Board of Selectment meeting.
Okay.
So you'll remove your second?
I do.
Okay. And so at this point, don't take anything out. Give Mr. Brown and myself an opportunity to review it, and then we'll provide with insight at that time at the next meeting.
Okay. The other thing, just to let the board know, which I mentioned at the beginning, there's three things that they're gonna be tweaking for us. So you can use this particular copy. The costs are not gonna change, but the content's gonna change a little bit. So when I get that from the vendor, I will have Julie forward that to you.
Thank you.
But just be aware that there's another version coming.
Okay.
Thanks.
I appreciate that very much. I want to thank the committee for all their hard work. It's just, um, I have an ideology here. I don't want to lose focus. Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, next item, autonomous.
So until I got that new information late in the day, I, I thought I had a pretty good handle on this. Um, but, but a sentence in that Drummond and Woodson piece, I don't know if you've had a chance to read it, kind of threw me.
Yes, I got that.
Yeah, the part about the, that warrant article not being a warrant article. So, like I said, I, I had already sent that to our attorney and said, let's talk about this tomorrow morning. Um, so I'll just have to figure out what that means. Um, I did meet with, uh, Don Quigley this morning. Um, he attended the moderator's session on Saturday, and certainly I think he's, he's in this meeting, um, but, and he can speak for himself, but what I got from that was as has been the case with so many things throughout this pandemic, we have more answers than questions, but the clock is ticking. And, you know, we gotta move forward because we have to move forward. So Don has suggested that we use the dates of, I think it was January twenty-seventh, Don, and February second, if those are seven days apart?
Uh, February third, so the twenty-seventh and the, and the third.
As the dates for the informational sessions. Um, that's coming up very quickly. I think if tomorrow, I can, with some combination of working with the moderator and Linda and, um, our attorney and NHMA, figure out exactly how this all works so that we can at least get the postcard out. Um, I know that the HB one-one-two-nine says that we only have to mail the postcard, mail it seven days before the first virtual session, but I honestly don't know that that gives the public, I don't even know that they would have the postcard in hand by the time of the first virtual session. Um, I did get the costs for the postcard. Um, we have, I think the number is three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight registered voters. The postage cost is twenty cents, uh, each. I, I had all of this on my desk today. Uh, today was another crazy day. My apologies. Um, I think that the costs from, uh, Allegra is somewhere, somewhere around a thousand dollars. Might be a little more than that. Um, but about a thousand dollars, and then, as I said, twenty cents each for three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight postcards, so.
That's.
That's what it's gonna cost.
Twenty-five dollars and sixty cents.
Yeah, that's what it's gonna, and I just saw this. I spelled COVID wrong. Wow. Um, so that's what it's gonna cost to get the postcard out. Um, if we can get a final of the postcard language to Allegra tomorrow, maybe Wednesday, this can go out this week.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so.
Are we talking about Wednesday, January twenty-seventh and February third?
Yes.
Why Wednesday?
Evening, evening session.
Okay, well, my question still stands. Why Wednesday? Why not a Saturday?
We, we can do it on a Saturday. Um, so let's circle back to the board. You know, the, the warrant gets posted January twenty-fifth or by January twenty-fifth. I think Linda had some concerns, and I hope she's still on the meeting and can speak to what her concerns were. If we push the dates out for the informational sessions, I think that means she's scrambling to get, um, the absentee ballots completed.
But that's correct. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah, I, I did call the ballot people today, but, um, they didn't return my. Okay, yeah, I I did call the ballot people today, but they didn't return my call as to how. What the turnaround time is, but I I. The past, I want to say it's at least a week, if not more. So. I won't have the ballots once that, once we finalize the the articles. And I have to send the the text to the ballot people. They have to send it back. I have to prove it, and then then I send it back, and then they print them. Um, that can, so that. Is about a week or so, and if we push the dates much further out than the the 27th and the 3rd. That's only going to give time for. The ballot absentee ballots to be sent out and returned in about two, two and a half weeks. Um, and so if we start shrinking that, Julie's concerned that people might not get the the um. The postcards within seven days, you know. We're sending them their ballots, and so, yeah, the time, the time's crunching.
Well, my issue is the post office. The post office is very slow these days. So you're assuming that just as you drop them off means they're going out then. No, that's not how it works. So I'm concerned that, one, we're not given enough time for people to get the notification. And, two, we've always done those particular kinds of meetings, at least lately, on Saturdays. Wednesday. I don't know. I I just, I I don't like to change. I understand what you're hearing, what you're saying, but I still think if we even if we finalize on the 6th, that still gives you what? Five weeks? Um. I would think that'd be a sufficient amount of time, but.
Well, yeah, if yes, if the 6th, which means that if that's a Saturday, then Monday I'd get it to them the 8th. And probably might have them back the 18th, the 15th and get them out. So that would give what, three weeks?
Three weeks.
Depending on how many there are, it might take a, you know, a day to get them all together and mailed, but um. But, yeah, that that would, I mean, that's okay. That's just my concern is as we pushing the dates. That's squeezing the the time, the timing for absentee ballots to go out and come back.
Well, I'm just the.
I I don't have a problem about Saturdays. That that I.
Yeah, that the doing it on a Saturday, like, is not a personal issue. It's just we're trying to.
Yep. I think it's a combination of those two things that are pushing this, so. And the thing is, just to let you know, the postcard that went out for the school district, I don't know, you all got the little postcard?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Some people got them on Thursday, some people got them on Friday, some people got them on Saturday. So, and they all live in Lee, so. That's three days when they sent these out. So just because you drop them off at the post office doesn't mean that's when they go out, and they are short on staff. I've got a friend that works in the Durham post office. They have so many people out sick and with COVID. That they're like skeleton staff, so. We can't count on those things if we drop them off, them going out in the next couple of three days. And then we're getting into that you have to provide them at least seven days' notice, so.
No, no, we don't have to provide seven days' notice.
I thought they have to go out seven days beforehand.
We we have to mail them out.
Oh, man.
Yeah, to be mailed.
They have to be mailed. What I'm suggesting is we get them out sooner for exactly what you just said. We don't know how fast the post office is going to get them out.
Yeah, well. If we move it to Saturday, that gives us three extra days for them to deliver them.
Again, it's up to Linda whether she can. And whether she thinks she can make it work.
Well, once again, it's Don and Linda in charge, so those are just my concerns.
Well, I'm okay with Saturdays. I I mean, like I said, I Wednesday, Saturday, it. I'm okay with whatever everybody wants. Um. It's just. So if we do Saturdays, does that make more time?
Well, it pushes the first date from the 27th to the 30th.
30th.
So it gives you, it gives you less time, but it gives the public more time.
Well, you're talking, what, three days?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Uh, I believe Karen Long wants to speak.
Please.
I just have a couple of questions. I apologize. I wasn't on the last meeting when we went to 1129. Are we fixed on doing it this way?
Yes.
Yes, it was voted.
At the last meeting, Don declared the emergency, so yes.
Yeah. It was, uh. I felt as though we had to make a call in that direction, but. I suppose it's too late to go back now to a standard in-person deliberative session, but.
I, well, not that I'm in favor of that, but it's not too late. I mean. I don't think it's too late.
The superintendent also let me know today that the town of Durham. And the town of Madberry and the school board are all doing in-person. So he wanted us to know that. We're going to be the odd one out.
And that's okay.
No, I don't mind being the odd one out.
I don't mind being the oddball, huh?
I I mean, honestly, as long as we all keep March 9th, I don't see that as an issue.
Yep.
And I agree. I'd rather leave it the way it is now and keep it virtual.
Which includes drive-through voting.
Yes, it does.
Well, that's the next thing we have to figure out. It's 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 a hybrid. It's not 100% drive-through voting.
It's face-to-face and.
And it has a drive-through component, the details of which nobody seems to exactly know.
Right, because as Don and I discussed, you can only have one set of books.
Right.
So the the books either, the book has to be either at the drive-through or at the in-person or somewhere where they're all together. And that's going to take some planning, so.
Or. Uh, for lack of a better term, maybe there are runners? Is that even possible?
You have to appear in person. With the keeper of the book.
Yeah.
And I I'm not sure.
No, I'm I'm sorry, I'm confused. So other towns did this, the the drive-up voting?
They did.
Over the course of this pandemic?
Right, but they went to the polling place, and then a ballot clerk went out and.
Okay, so a ballot clerk went out to each of the cars?
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
So I've left myself on mute so I can continue to speak.
Well, I'm sorry, and I'm just trying to picture how this would work, but but couldn't a ballot clerk go to the car? And then quote-unquote run back to the checklist and say, okay, John Smith? I don't know.
I think we can. I think we can find.
But the the question is, do we go to all drive-in? I mean, after reading that that second letter that you sent out, Julie, the from the law firm, I think it was.
Yep.
Um, they spelled it out. I thought pretty good, and now I have a better vision of of how it works. And it's like. Maybe we just do the drive-through and don't open the polling.
That that's an option.
My only concern about that is the people sitting outside all day, if it's a cold day. Um.
And if it snows and all the other things that happen and.
Well, I mean, I think. Have to have that component. So if you have to have it. Um. And the logistics, I'm not sure how we do it. Um, I would. I would almost like, I was, after reading it, leaning towards, why don't we just do drive-through?
Well, we had talked about that, and we had suggested, or someone had suggested, using the transfer station.
Yep, yep, Don did, yeah. And after reading that, because I just didn't understand, I couldn't visualize how it was going to work. But after reading that 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 letter or the the suggestions or whatever it was. Um, I just thought it spelled it out fairly well, and it sounded fairly logical, so.
Well, I think we have some time to plan that part. I think what we really need to do in the next couple of days is get the, get our information sessions squared away. Uh, in a timely fashion so we can get these absentee ballots printed. And and then we'll, maybe we ought to convene a little ad hoc committee of all the players to try to. Work out the details that fit our particular facilities.
Well, the other thing.
Maybe a hybrid, maybe all drive-through, maybe a beach.
But we need to know what it's going to be before we send the postcard out, because the postcard has to clearly tell the voters what it's going to be. That's what I got out of the information that I've read.
Yeah, I did notice that, too. It's like, oh, okay, it's all it's all intertwined together.
Right.
So I guess maybe we need to have a answer from the state how we would be able to do this.
Well, I, our attorney and NHMA say that further guidance is forthcoming from the state. Um, but I, you know, I don't know when.
Well, I I would like to use some terminology in these postcards that go out. And leave it a little open and then give the final, the most detailed information at our information sessions. And so.
Well, for example, the postcard has to tell people where you're going to go to vote. So if we're doing it at the transfer station, we we have to tell them that. I mean, that's my understanding from everything I've read so far.
And if we're doing hybrid, we have to tell them that, and I think we need an answer from the state. How do we do that?
Right.
With only one set of books?
Right.
Other than using the electronic polling, which we don't have.
Right.
Can I make a suggestion? We're not going to solve this tonight.
Yeah.
Issues at hand, as a select person, I'm going to leave it in the hands of the, you know. To the, as Don says, you know, the core group of people that got to make the decision because they have to make it work. And whatever they move to, I'll be happy. I'm just hold that, we're holding on to the virtual information sessions because I. That's why I figured the area of COVID transmissivity is a good opportunity if we go face-to-face. If we do face-to-face voting, uh, voting, last time I felt Don and crew handled that, it was exceptional. Uh, so if we had to do face-to-face voting with a hybrid, I can live with, or just totally drive-through, either one. So I I think at this point, who would be considered to be the core group of people that should sit down and make a formal decision? Once they get more information from the state.
Well, I have a list of people I'd like to include, which would be Linda and Julie, of course. Um, Karen, Karen Rossi, Karen Long, myself. Scott Nemmett, who's our emergency person, and also a selectman representative. If we could organize a Zoom meeting of those three, of those, that group, a small group of people. Maybe early next week or later this week. Uh, maybe we can scramble to get a little more information together and come up with a decision before the postcard.
I would suggest this week, again, you know, as we talk about how tight all this timing is. I just don't think we can wait until next week to make decisions.
No, because then you lose all that time mailing those mailers out.
Right.
Because you said if you've got the information. I think you said if you had the information tomorrow to send to them, they'd be able to mail them out this week?
That, yes.
Yeah, okay. So I think that should be definitely sooner than later, like within the next couple of days.
Yep.
I think we have a plan.
Uh, who would be the selectman representative person that would work with us?
Who's available tomorrow night?
It's got, it's got Bugby written all over it.
It does because I got planning board tomorrow night.
What is it tomorrow? What?
See, I know he'd volunteer. He just said it.
Tomorrow night?
I don't know, Don, Don, when, when.
Does this have to be at night? Can it be during the day?
It could be during the day. I think most of the people on the list would have some availability for a short time during the day.
Well, I think Karen Long's not available.
Depends on what time of day that I can try to make myself available, yes. For a Zoom call, yes.
Give us a time midday tomorrow, Karen.
Well, hang on a second. I got to bring my calendar up.
Well, if I'm getting, what's the word, roped into this?
Railroad is the term.
I'm I'm committed between 12:30 and 2:30 tomorrow with something already, so.
That's that's not the right word at all. You were.
3 o'clock. What about 3 o'clock tomorrow?
I could do 3 o'clock.
And honestly, I think later in the afternoon is better in terms of us all trying to get information out of the state and our attorneys and so forth.
Can you put something together for us at 3 o'clock, Julie?
Yep.
I will.
And we'll gather as much information as we can in the morning, and we'll try to make a call on this. And have some detailed plan at 3 o'clock.
Okay.
What about you, Karen Long? 3 o'clock?
3 o'clock, yes.
Karen Rossi?
Yes, 3 o'clock is good.
Scott Nemmett?
Uh, that works. Thank you. We all set?
All right, thanks a lot.
We are.
I wish I had more answers.
Are we also determining when we're doing, when when the the information sessions are?
Yes, so that'll be part of it.
Okay, okay.
Whatever you decide, we're going to go with it.
Sounds good.
Don't let the power go to your head, Bill. Thank you, everybody. Next item, any miscellaneous unfinished business?
No, no, no.
She's not done.
Use of the meeting room in the new town building. So now that we are over here, there's been some chatter. From outside groups, and by that I mean, you know, town board committees, commissions, and so forth. Uh, about using the meeting room here. Um. I I don't want to speak for the board, but I'm going to assume that the prohibition against meeting is going to carry to this building. Since it's still in place for the public safety complex.
And I I agree with the town administrator. I mean, we still have this coronavirus out there, and we got these new variants coming all the time, and not all of us. Are in, have the inoculation of the vaccine at this time. So I want to suggest that the meeting room just not be open for usage. Will maintain our Zoom presence with all our meetings.
Okay.
I think I would like to take a different tact. I would take the tact that all the committees. That are in the town should be using Zoom. They shouldn't be meeting in public. So I would like to take that same tact, which I think satisfies that same result. But they should not be meeting in public. They should be meeting on Zoom, just like everybody else.
Absolutely. We're in agreement. Anything else, Julie?
Uh, no, no, other than yay, we're in the new building.
Yay! Hurrah, hurrah, hurrah. Doesn't that make you feel good?
Yes, yes.
It makes me feel good. It's like, just do it, so therefore I'll have to change my outlook. Here we go.
There we go.
See that?
Far out.
Far out, man.
Well, I was over there this last Friday, and the one word that comes in to me when I was doing the tour, and I know they're not done yet, but spacious. Seems to be the word that I would do to describe that particular building with who's in there, so. Hopefully, going forward, you guys can let us know in terms of what works in that building and what doesn't. We can use that as a template for a new structure.
Yep.
It all works.
Perfectly. Good point, Scott.
What happened to the town clerk? It all works?
It all works. It is totally awesome. It's spacious, it's clean, it's bright.
There we go.
I'm I'm happy, and I think Julie's happy. She's got walls, walls and doors.
Well, the one thing, when I first walked in. Uh, I went into Denise's space, and it was warm, and Denise was happy. So anything that makes Denise happy, I'm all for.
Yeah, that's true.
That was awesome. It is totally awesome.
Okay, ready for the next item?
Yep.
I move to enter a non-public section, New Hampshire, R C 91-8 colon 32A, and is that L or I?
Uh, L.
L. We'll have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
No, I didn't think so. Roll call vote, Mr. Bugby.
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kors, yes.
Um, it's Mark.